Okay, microphones are on. I'd like to welcome everyone to the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, May 11th. I am Alderman Mike Bruno, Alderman for the First Ward of Geneva along with the newly minted Alderwoman Tara Burkhardt. We'll begin the agenda, let's see, called order, note that every Alderman is present, and the mayor. Items of business, 3A wastewater-
Do we need to approve the minutes?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, approve the minutes from April 27th, 2015, do I have a motion?
So.
Marx and Singer, any modifications to that? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, item 3A, wastewater plant facility update, presentation on aeration and phosphorus reduction improvements by Dan Bounds and Amru Attasi with CDM Smith, hopefully I got those names right. I hear a motion? Oh, no, we don't need a motion.
No.
Okay, Mr. Van Gescam, can you introduce our guests?
Good evening, everybody. About a year ago, we entered into a contract with CDM Smith for a facility plan update in preparation to the new limits that were going to be imposed to our NPDS permit for our wastewater plant. So, Dan and Amru were tasked to look into our facility and see what improvements were going to be needed, and so tonight, Dan is going to go over those findings, and I'll let him kind of explain where Amru is at.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you all for having me, let me bring up the slides. Each of you should have a printout of the slides, does anyone not have? Okay, there you go. Thanks very much. I am doing double duty tonight, Amru has come down with the flu, and he's keeping those germs out of Geneva. Why not attending tonight?
Thank you.
Yes, great, so like Bob said, we've been taking a look at wastewater water facilities in Geneva for several months now, you know, going on a year, and there are some drivers behind taking a look at the condition of water and wastewater treatment facilities. And just as an overview of these drivers, in January of this year, the city received a new wastewater discharge permit, that's the NPDS permit from IEPA. It includes new discharge limits for total phosphorus, so it requires a brand-new requirement for the city of Geneva, treatment of phosphorus, removal of phosphorus from the wastewater discharge. This will be an annual average limit imposed by Illinois EPA at a 1 milligram per liter concentration, so of all of the sampling from the wastewater treatment plant for phosphorus, an annual average of 1 milligram per liter. The permit also requires a feasibility evaluation or an additional study for what it would take for Geneva to get down to .5 milligrams per liter, so half of the 1 milligram per liter that's required by the permit at this time. So, lower phosphorus limits may be imposed in the future, right now, one feasibility study asked for at .5 milligrams per liter, but there's a Fox River Study Group, some of you may be very familiar with that, working on an implementation plan that could require a different concentration or effluent concentration of phosphorus as well, so those results are still pending. There's also the accepting landfill leachate from Midway landfill, the treatment plant would have to be accept, or to provide acceptable treatment for that leachate, and some improvements could be necessary to the plant as well. And then there's always future growth. We took up a planning study horizon of 2034, and a design flow of about 7.5 million gallons per day, MGD on your slides, there stands for million gallons per day. So these are some of the backgrounds that the city is facing, wastewater treatment plant and staff are facing for providing the services in Geneva. So, timing, described in the permit, and some reporting that's due, January of 2016 is when IEPA is looking for a phosphorus removal study report to go in to describe what kind of upgrades might be needed at the plant. The work that we have been doing for the past several months provide that information for Geneva to send to IEPA. And then, the timeline goes on, a submission of plans, so design of treatment plant specifications and modifications by July of 2017, construction of those plant improvements by July 2018, and then achieving that 1 milligram per liter phosphorus effluent standard by July of So we did a lot of analysis, a lot of alternatives evaluation to determine some recommendations for the city, and at this time, I'd like to thank the staff at the wastewater treatment plant, the public works staff, we did a lot of back-and-forth coordination, sharing data, there was a lot of jar testing or treatment feasibility sampling and studying that the plant staff had to run. Every city's wastewater is a different, different municipal makeup, different industrial makeup, so when we're looking at fine-tuned treatment alternatives like phosphorus control, we really need to know how the wastewater reacts to different types of treatment, and the jar testing and the sample results that the plant staff did were amongst the best we've ever seen. So, that's tremendous. It gives us a lot of confidence in the alternatives, and a lot of confidence in the recommendations that we're making. So, getting into results from the feasibility study, facilities plan update, the aeration system at the plant, the system that provides the aeration to drive the treatment process is deficient, deficient for future loads of growth, deficient for accepting landfill leachate. So we took a look at alternatives with respect to type of equipment that's out on the market today, the energy use of that equipment, space constraints or space requirements at the plant and for the equipment, lifecycle cost analysis, of course, and based on that, replacing the current aeration system blowers, the blowers, the engines that drive that aeration into the water, replacing what you have currently with four turbo blowers as recommended, and we did this aeration system improvements based on future growth up to 7.5 million gallons per day, again. So, besides aeration improvements at the plant, there's going to be, need to be some improvements to the plant to reduce phosphorus. And we took a look at several alternatives, because there are several for removing phosphorus, two main categories of removing phosphorus are biological treatment and chemical treatment, and we had three really feasible biological phosphorus removal alternatives that we looked at, and then two chemical phosphorus removal alternatives as well. And these can work hand-in-hand, which you'll see in subsequent slides, you can have biological treatment with chemical treatment on the back end of the biological as well for reliability and redundancy, again, looking at this at 7.5 MGD design flow. So, some of the advantages of enhanced biological treatment, there's slightly less residuals impact, these are the solids that are left from the treatment process, enhanced biological would have less of an impact than chemical treatment would, and there's slightly a better, a slightly better cost situation with biological removal, and then enhanced biological plus chemical removal or chemical precipitation provides a lot of reliability, adaptability for future regulations that might be coming down the line, and there's some operational flexibility that comes in with providing both biological and chemical removal. So, our recommendations in the plan update are mainly in two phases, phase one being what's it going to take to get that 1 milligram per liter phosphorus limit and reliably treating the 1 milligram per liter? That sort of has two phases within that phase, a phase 1A and phase 1B. Phase 1A would be the aeration improvements, replacing the equipment, diffusers within the plant that provide that air into the water, new baffle walls, mixers pumping, piping, and some repairs, and then phase 1B would be the addition of that chemical treatment at the end, and that would primarily be during the first phase for high-flow periods, excess-flow periods like rain events when there's a lot of water moving through the plant. And then phase 2, we have in our report, or our study is to do the upgrades it would take to get to that .5 milligram per liter phosphorus limit, if IEPA comes with the more stringent .5 milligram per liter standard, the second phase of work to get down to that from instead of 1 milligram per liter. And this is just a schematic of some of the detail we went into, into the alternatives we looked at, we took the city's base layout plans within the wastewater treatment plant and showed in the red lines and the blue lines where baffle walls would need to be put in, recirc lines, new mixers to be able to provide the phosphorus treatment within the existing tankage already on site. So, in summary, our recommendations, again, phase 1 would be to upgrade the aeration system, the four turbo blowers and all the associated piping, and then the phosphorus improvement, phosphorus improvement, treatability improvements, which would get down to 1 milligram per liter, the aeration improvements, the blower replacement, associated controls, piping, valves, the diffuser replacement, baffle walls, and the mixers and other repairs I mentioned on the previous slide, that's estimated at a capital cost of $5 million, and there's a grant from Illinois Clean Energy Community Foundation of $83,000, I think it gets worked into that. So that's phase 1 to get to 1 milligram per liter phosphorus limit, which is in the current permit right now. Phase 2, what it might take to get to .5 milligrams per liter if that, if that standard is required by IEPA, that would cost an additional $4 million in capital to meet the demands of the future growth, future loading, and that, and that lower phosphorus limit. So, timing, design would take eight to 10 months approximately for, for design to take place of the improvements, we've done some of the conceptual engineering now as far as retrofitting the plant, sizes, equipment, repairs, things like that, so eight to 10 months for design. Bidding and permitting usually around three months, give or take, construction would take 12 to 16 months, and then startup and testing another one to two months, so these are the sort of timeframes it would take to get into compliance with the new 1 milligram per liter standard for phosphorus imposed by IEPA. And I just wanted to mention, there is state revolving fund loan money available out there that a lot of communities are using to upgrade their plants for the new limit, many, many communities throughout Illinois are seeing these new limits from IEPA. And with that, happy to take any questions about the study work we've done, facilities plan.
Alderman Marx and Alderman Singer.
How many gallons are we treating today? You said the plan is 7.5 million, what's our average now?
That's a future-
Yeah, but what are we doing right now?
And Bob, what is the current flow of the plan?
Between 4-
Four and five?
Our current permit is set for 5 million, and we're at about between 4.5 and 4.75 million a day.
What's our phosphorus now at? They want us down to 1 milligram per liter, what are we currently at?
Currently, we're able to, I want to say we're between 1.5 and 2, so we're not that far off.
Okay.
But what will happen is, once we get the aeration improvements completed, then the phosphorus levels are going to go up because we're actually, because of our deficiency in the aeration improvements, it's actually allowing us to almost treat phosphorus right now, but it's still, we're still not meeting the 1, but as soon as the aeration improvements are done, it's going to allow the phosphorus levels to go up higher. Dan might be able to explain that a little bit better.
Right, when you're providing, oh yeah, thanks.
Microphone.
Yeah, thanks. Yep, right now, if we were to provide more aeration to the current biological oxygen loading coming into the plant, it would actually release more phosphorus through the treatment process than is being released right now with the lower amount of, lower amount of aeration added.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Singer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The lower phosphate limits may be imposed in the future, the product that you're going to be presenting to us, you have presented to us, will let available to meet that prospect of, if there's a need for, to lower those numbers in the future?
It would, the feasibility study that we have done shows how we can get to the 1 milligram per liter standard that's imposed now, and if phase 2 is implemented, would get down to the .5 milligram per liter standard, that enhanced biological removal and chemical removal with, along with that, would get down to .5.
Okay, this is what's confusing me, are we going to have two phases of development here, phase 1 that you mentioned, and then there's going to be a phase 2?
Yeah, phase 1 would get to the current 1 milligram per liter standard, and if IEPA was to impose the .5 milligram per liter standard, phase 2 improvements would have to happen to get down to that .5.
Why can't we have just one phase to eliminate below the .5?
That's a possibility, that could happen, if, if all of those improvements wanted to be done at the same time, but there's costs, costs come into play with the second phase.
Okay, you also indicate that you're going to provide, there'll be some confidence in the recommendations and should translate into capital and operation and maintenance costs, savings for the city. What kind of guarantee you giving us on that?
If we had less reliable laboratory data to work with, we would have had to incorporate like a margin of error or safety, we would have been less confident in the treatment predictions that we were making, but with the exceptional laboratory work that we got from the plant staff, we were able to narrow in tighter on the equipment, the treatability recommendations, and the costs.
Okay.
We've had, we've had much less reliable data to work with in other situations where we had to put more of an error bars or a range on the, on the costs.
You indicated there is a $83,000 grant from the Illinois Clean Energy Community Foundation, is there, if that is available to us, that is assured, there's an assurance that we will get that grant?
It is a grant that the city could apply for to secure those funds, there is an active push within that foundation especially targeted towards wastewater and water treatment plants for, to increase energy efficiency.
Okay, and then you also indicate that there is an IEPA, SRF funding, you know, these acronyms confuse me a little, would you explain that, please?
Yeah, SRF is the State Revolving Fund, it's a, it's a loan fund that IEPA makes available at about a 2.5% interest rate.
That's not a grant, that is-
Correct.
-a liability of funding at a low interest rate.
That would be a low-interest rate loan, some communities are using that program, some are not, because it's not for them.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Alderman Cummings.
I'm, I'm wondering if, in a really objective way, if this is, if we're even asking a question correctly, if we have a phosphorus problem in runoff water, and you're proposing a $9 million solution to remove the phosphorus from the water before we put it into the river, wouldn't another solution be, rather than, how do we remove it, how do we prevent it from going in in the first place? And is this something that maybe Kane County ought to look at for fertilizer and agricultural runoff, to prevent it in the first place, so that we don't have to absorb the cost to pull it out of the water that, when it, when it's getting put in by some of the surrounding land?
Those, those programs exist too, IEPA has their stormwater permits which regulate the runoff from communities, they also take a look at other sources of phosphorus into the waterways, the wastewater permits limit is specific to the wastewater flows, and you're right, anything that could be done to prevent phosphorus from coming into the city's wastewater flow stream would help with the loading of phosphorus coming out the, the back end and would have to be treated by the plant. Now, a lot of those can be difficult to implement and wouldn't give you a lot of phosphorus reduction, but if there was an industry in town that would have a major phosphorus load, it might be worth, you know, talking to them about what could be done to reduce it.
So where does the phosphorus come from?
Primarily from general wastewater flows, just from the, the natural process of body waste, food waste, and then sometimes there's additional industrial loading of phosphorus too.
All right, it was my impression a lot that the largest percentage is agricultural.
Which is a completely different program than the wastewater treatment permit.
So it's not, the golf courses are using phosphorus-rich fertilizer, or homeowners or, you know, Home Depot selling, that's not really adding significantly to the load?
Those are sources of phosphorus, and they could be significant, we'd have to take a look at, you know, what kind of runoff loading they would have from, from stormwater from those areas, but Illinois EPA has taken a look at phosphorus loading statewide, and it's, it's not the same in every state, but for Illinois, it's about, they figured about 50/50 total phosphorus load to the state's surface waters between permitted wastewater treatment plants and agriculture and stormwater runoff and things like that.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Reddicki.
You said that our permit is granted based on a 1.0 phosphorus discharge, if we can get to that-
Correct.
... condition, are different communities granted different tolerances with the amount of phosphate that they can discharge?
IEPA's been putting 1 milligram per liter in all of their permits-
It's in all of their permits.
... currently that I've seen, yeah.
Back, back to the question about, you know, is this going to go to, is it going to go to 1.0 then to .5? Has the staff done any kind of a risk analysis, I mean, to see, I mean, how likely is it that we are going to go to .5, and when? I mean, do we have a feel for that? And the question is, what do we save by just doing it now and, and going forward and biting the bullet and getting the facility ready to go to .5 now? I mean, you know, if, if it's a savings of $2 million to do it now, and we're relatively certain that it is going to go to .5, why don't we just do it? I mean, do you have any, does the staff have any feeling for that?
The .5 regulation just hasn't been finalized with the IEPA, this is mandate is coming all the way down from the federal level, and it has forced the Illinois EPA to invoke this limit, Illinois is one of the last states in the Midwest to invoke these phosphorus, phosphate limits. The issue is, is that with this phase 1, as we're referring it to, is we're basically laying the groundwork and the bones for the phase 2 in the future, the only way we can really get to the phase 2 is go through the chemical injection process, and right now, we're looking at the chemical injection process basically as a failsafe, the plant starts getting overwhelmed with stormwater runoff, so the, the groundwork, so to speak, will be there, it just won't be in the, the automated control system, so there'd be a lot of manual controls to operate that system because it'd only be used in extreme contingencies. So we have looked at, at both factors, the question, we, we, we just don't have enough guidance from the IEPA yet, and there's also, like Friends of the Fox, where they're doing their own study about the phosphorus levels within the Fox River, as to whether or not they are going to invoke that lower limit, and that, the Fox River has been declared an impaired river, primarily due to, to this load level, so we are, we've prepared as much as possible, but we don't want to pull the trigger because it is a $4 million commitment, primarily to automate it, the whole system, so we're confident right now that we're going to at least have four, maybe five years before this next phase might get invoked.
Thanks.
Alderman Simonia.
Thank you, Chairman. If we partnered with Batavia and St. Charles and something like this, could we get a better bang for our buck, since they're going to probably have to do it too?
Each wastewater plant is a completely own different breathing, literally breathing, living animal, so there, what we're going to have to do to bring our plan to compliance is going to be completely different than what St. Charles, Batavia, Elgin, Carpentersville Forward are all going to have to do. At the end of the day, concrete is still going to be concrete, the pumps are still going to be the pumps, so there's, in order to do a joint venture, you have to have a similarity in material and specifications to gain that cost reduction, and because every plant is going to be completely different, there would be an extremely limited likelihood that we could do a, a joint venture with them, or if there was even any desire on their part to do a joint venture, because again, each agency has its own funding mechanism, it's operated as its own enterprise utility. I'm not saying we, we couldn't look into it, I would just be extremely low, low likelihood of success with that matter.
Well, regardless of the similarities of the projects, I would think if it's a construction project, having three separate types of construction projects versus one might be of interest to a company, I don't know, and I don't know enough about the bidding process or-
Remember the phosphorus levels in Elgin?
Just a, just a suggestion.
The load levels in Elgin were well in excess of what ours were, we're going down 1, 1 milligram, Elgin, and I can get those numbers to you, it was at least a factor of 10 of what we were dealing with, if not more. So again, it, it depends on what kind of system you're dealing with, Elgin has parts of its city that's combined sewer, so storm, and sanitary get commingled, again, it's, looking into it, we can, it's just a question of how much staff time we want to invest to pursue this, we have monthly meetings with our fellow plant operators, it's something we can bring up to the next meeting and see if there's any interest, I can report back.
Okay, and the, is there a secondary, secondary market for this equipment that we're going to pull out? Do you know?
The blowers that are going to be replaced, Bob, you can back me up on this, they, they've reached their youthful life, right?
Yeah, three of the five blowers have been in since 1970, so I, other than scrap, I don't think anybody's probably willing to make an investment in something like that.
So there's no way to recoup any of that?
You know, the other two might, it, it's a possibility, but it's certainly something that, that, you know, I've thought of, that we should reach out and, and see if there's some, a community that, that would be willing to, to take them for a price.
Yeah. And what happens if we don't do anything? What's the fine and how often?
You want to answer that one, or?
Oh, I can start, start thinking, well, the first step is violation of your, your discharge permit, and it's never a good position to be as a municipality with Illinois EPA, and then the enforcement process would start, and typically, that would be requiring you to, to do the improvements by court order rather than by permit, so these, these limits are, are into the current permit and other communities along the Fox as well.
There's also usually a daily fine invoked in that to you bring yourself back into compliance. I believe it was about 10 years ago, we had a dump issue, it was about a $25,000 fine for a relatively small event of less than 1,000 gallons, so the EPA, right now, we're actually ahead of the curve compared to our fellow agencies up and down the Fox River, we're actually well ahead of the process, Bob has seen this one coming, Bob has been pre-planning for this since, I don't know, my, since I started, before I started, but with the EPA, they send out a U-SHEL letter, and there's, there's no room for anything at that point in time, there's no room for us to pre-plan anything, it's just, now you're immediate, and any chance for getting favorable costs through contractors because now, now they know you're up against the firing line, that is not a viable road to, to go down.
Just taking $9 million, it's, if we can buy a couple of years or something, and, you know, not that we won't do it, it's just that, maybe not do it too soon, do it where we can take advantage of the time.
Well, again, the, the first phase is what, which what we're targeting right now is the $5 million phase, you know, there is, there is the potential, and we're not going to sugarcoat it, there is a potential that the IEPA could lower that limit to .5. There's also the potential that they could invoke other limits for, such as nitrogen, which is something else that we looked at during the study as to whether or not we are going to pre-position ourselves favorably in case there's nitrogen limits that come out, and Dan, if you wanted to talk about that?
I could, yeah, a lot of the facility improvements that we're talking about to get the treatment for phosphorus where it needs to be, go a long way to get towards that nitrogen removal requirement if that should ever come to play, like Richard said, we don't know if the .5 is actually going to come into play or, or when it will, we also don't know when another nutrient nitrogen limits might be showing up in permits, if that's 10, 15 years, you know, we have no way to predict that, but the improvements that we're looking at now go a long way towards meeting nitrogen requirements if they would go into play, it would just take a little bit more study and optimization to be fine-tuning the treatment for phosphorus and nitrogen, rather than just the cost to, to go after phosphorus.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Any other questions? Alderman Tilburg.
Our municipalities underwriting this, obviously, your cert rates would be impacted, I would assume, at some point in time.
We were actually planning on bringing forth a presentation to the city council for review either at the next cowl on the 26th, or the early cowl in June. review either at the next cowl on the 26th or the early cowl in June, giving options and different scenarios that we've been working through with both our utility rate consultant as well as the finance manager, Tom Dahl. But there will be an impact.
Would you, what do you think you'd capitalize this over a 10, 20-year period?
Again, that would determine what the tolerance of the City Council is for more debt. And as we're all aware, there is great concern with some members of the City Council about the debt load as well as some concern within the auditors of the debt load within the water utility. So we are looking at all options from the I E P A alone to rate adjustments.
One last question. We're somewhat limited with the site. Is there, do you foresee or envision any problem with the site over the next 20 or 30-year period? I mean...
Just a minute.
Do we have enough space to do the things that we're going to need to service this community for the next 25 to 50 years?
I believe so. We took a look at that in the planning horizon and the current improvements that are being proposed don't require any additional tankage space. They're retrofitting what's there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the deists? I've got a couple. Mr. Van Gescam, kudos for getting that service life out of our pump. You said 1970s?
1970s, correct.
Obviously, some user serviceable parts, I suppose. The, would the service life of the new pumps be...
Highly doubtful.
But the operating cost is lower.
There's that. And kudos for impressing our consultant with a well-run facility. I've been there. It's, I'm going to thank you for pointing that out for us.
Dan and his crew down there do an excellent job and they put a lot of thought and time and energy into the samples that Dan was talking about. They're very proud of what they did.
If no one has asked us any more questions than the plant staff did to make sure they get it right and provided very good information for us to bring the recommendations.
Now, those aeration pumps, those feed into those rubber tubes at the bottom of the tanks, is that right? There's some long tubes that...
Correct, the aeration, the membranes, yes.
And there's no issue with them being up to spec for this new higher turbo?
Some will have to be retrofitted, but the ones that we have replaced had holes in them and we needed to replace them anyway. So some of them may have to be retrofitted. It just depends on what the design shows.
Okay, and I had been to some of those Fox River Study Group meetings and one thing that really made me uncomfortable is I'd gotten the sense that we don't have really a good handle on what is agricultural contribution to phosphorus versus point source municipal sources. You seem to, you had said something like 50/50?
I E P A is saying total state loading of phosphorus is about 50/50, communities and wastewater treatment plants, and then agricultural and non-point type runoff.
But then it sounds like some communities, like you say, Elgin is a far larger contributor to phosphorus than Geneva. Is that...
Based on the size of the facility, yes. They're going to have to have very large improvements compared to what...
Just because of population.
Correct. How much they serve, yes.
Okay, so I had. There's no questions? Any questions from the public? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, on to item 3B. Recommend approval of Chamber of Commerce liquor license Class E6 for Swedish Days, June 25th to June 28th, 2015. Arts Fair, July 25th, 2015, and Festival of the Vine, September 11th through 13th, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mark Sanzino for that. Do we, is there any discussion about that? Is there anything the chamber would like to add? We're not making you.
You're not what?
We're not making you.
No, no, no. Actually, I wanted to say something, but first of all, it's really nice to have all three approved at one time so we can move forward and get our permits from the state as well. So this is time efficient for us and hopefully for you as well. But I thought, I wish I had talked about this last week, so I'm adding on to the comments. Because we're upon festival season right now, I thought I should remind you about the miracle. And I wondered if you knew about the miracle. The miracle of the festivals is all of the people that it takes to put it together. And that's all of the volunteers that come together, the community people, old timers, newcomers who want to meet people. The gearings were prime examples of that type of individual. Then you add the city staff, the city departments, police, fire, public works, even some of you aldermen volunteer. So to me, that's the miracle, something we're very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. If there's no other questions, all those in favor of 3B signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 3C. Recommend approval of letter of correction for final plat of subdivision and planned unit development for Prairie Ridge Townhomes Phase 2. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Singer.
Second.
Second by Cummings. Is there any discussion of this? Alderman Radecki?
Yeah, I guess I need some clarification, maybe, from David. So I guess I just want to have some peace of mind or just clarification that we don't have an issue that we had in Fisher Farms some time ago with envelopes and being able to put a, you know, people building out too far in the envelope and not being able to put a deck or a patio on it and then coming back to the city later. If I'm reading this right, does this have any impact? Let's say I buy one of these 43 homes now and I go to put a deck or something on and there is this encroachment issue with the easement. Is this going to limit the size that I'm going to be able to put?
This...
For a deck or a patio?
This would not. Any deck or patio would still be subject to the setback requirements and lock coverage requirements established in the planned unit development. What happened was at the time of plating, they established the blanket easement outside of the anticipated building envelopes for the new homes. And in just a handful of situations, there's been the need to encroach into that easement for a deck or patio, but not into a setback or not to increase lock coverage or anything like that.
So they'll still have to maintain five feet away from the utility no matter what they build, correct?
Right. If there's an existing utility, it would still have to be five feet away so that would give you what would be our typical 10-foot easement around the utility.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the deists? I had one, Dave. Is this a standard, is this a not uncommon way of doing an easement? It seems like it, I'm familiar with the easement, you know, one narrow way to get into the utilities, but it seems like this completely surrounds the building envelope. Is there a problem with putting up fences or maybe the P U D disallows fences?
No, this P U D does disallow for fences. There's no fences in this P U D. I can't think of any other examples that I've worked out. We haven't had a lot of new subdivisions in my time with the city where we've had new blanket easements. But I don't think it's a radical concept. It's when there's kind of an unconventional layout and you have utilities kind of meandering through the development, it's just easier to do.
Okay. Well, fences were the only thing that came to mind that would be obviously in the easement and if they're disallowed, it's probably not an issue. So if they're happy, then I'm happy. They're happy, right?
They're happy, yes.
There's no other questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Let's see. 3D. Recommend draft resolution authorizing a $2,000 contract addendum with ESI Consultants Limited related to Route 31 Water Main Replacement, Stevens Street to Northerly Corporate Limits of the City of Geneva. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Cummings and Marx. Looks like we've got somebody to ask questions of. Questions from the deists? Or do you have, you don't have a presentation, right?
No, sir.
Alderman Simoni.
Thank you, Chairman. Rich, is this, in your opinion, the end of the revisions with this?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, the construction plans have already been submitted to the I E P A for their construction permit and we have actually received that construction permit from the I E P A.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Any other questions? Seeing none, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 3E. Presentation on Protect My Town. It's corrected to Protect My Town campaign. We've got City Administrator Mary Kittrick. Do you want the lights off, Mary?
I don't think it's necessary. Unless someone can't see it, well, we can do that, but otherwise, I don't think it is.
Oh. Did we get, oh, there is no motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and City Council. I wanted to bring to your attention the Protect My Town campaign. This is a public relations campaign that was created by the DuPage Mayors and Managers, so it's an organization made up of suburban communities, elected and appointed officials in response to Governor Rauner's threat to take revenue, L G D F, as we've been talking about for several months now, from cities and villages. Suburban communities are using this campaign to ask their citizens to stand up and take action to oppose the governor's plan to take revenues that fund basic services such as snow plowing, street maintenance, sidewalk repair, mosquito abatement, and other community programs. And in our case, such as senior care program, the prescription drug disposal program, Wright and Kane, and so forth. The Protect My Town campaign was developed, as I said, by DuPage Mayors and Managers Association. That is part of a coalition opposing the governor's plan to cut the local share of income taxes. And they, along with the Northwest Municipal Conference, the McHenry County Conference of Governments, the Metro West Council of Government, which we are a member of, the Southwestern Illinois Conference of Mayors, and the Will County Government League are all worked together to produce this campaign. These organizations represent residents and municipalities in Cook, DuPage, Kane, Lake, Will, DeKalb, Kendall, and McHenry Counties. This is a video where it's being explained. Oops.
Hello, I'm Martin Tully, the mayor of the Village of Downers Grove and the current president of the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference, which serves municipalities throughout DuPage County. I'm here to talk to you about something called the Local Government Distributive Fund, or L G D F for short. Now, if you're like most Illinoisans, you probably have no idea what that's about. Admittedly, it's quite obscure. The Local Government Distributive Fund is a local revenue source for cities and villages that plays an important role in the lives of each and every Illinois resident. This local revenue provides the basic services that your city or village depend on. And we're talking about things like garbage pickup, snow removal, road maintenance and repairs, and infrastructure projects that are vital in sustaining your community. Even more importantly, these funds help pay for key personnel and public safety employees, including police officers and firefighters who protect our communities. While this revenue has been an essential component of local budgets for more than 45 years, Springfield lawmakers are now looking to divert these funds and use them to help fill the state's budget deficit. At stake is $1.2 billion that cities, villages, and counties receive on an annual basis. Generated by you, the local residents, and collected by the state before being distributed back to municipalities, these tax dollars account for a significant share of your local operating budget. Governor Rauner has proposed taking half of this fund, which will result in more than a $600 million shortfall in municipal budgets. This would cause a loss of $49.50 per resident from each Illinois municipality. For many communities, this would result in losses of more than $1 million every year. $49.50 per resident. That equals a $60 million loss in DuPage County. In DuPage County alone, cities and villages would lose nearly $60 million each year. Reducing our local share would result in significant local budget holes, including and ensuring that taxpayers pay more and yet get less in return. In many instances, that could mean drastic cuts in services, layoffs of police officers and firefighters, and in some cases, higher property taxes. The bottom line is that if the state takes these funds, it will merely shift the burden of balancing the state's budget onto local governments and taxpayers. The reality is that Illinois municipalities have been tightening their belts for years following the economic downturn of the Great Recession that continues to linger. We've been cutting services and personnel, privatizing services, reducing programs, collaborating with other local government units, and doing more with less. The state needs to tighten its belt before asking municipalities, our residents and businesses, to tighten ours even more. Now, make no mistake, we want very much to work with the governor and the General Assembly on much-needed reforms and practical solutions to the state's financial crisis. But we can't let Springfield shift the tax burden of doing so onto our communities and ultimately onto you. Mayors like myself from across the state are urging lawmakers to resist taking away this revenue, but we need your help. You can now show your support and let your lawmakers know that we need to protect the L G D F funds. Please visit www.ProtectMyTown.com. All it takes is three easy steps to send a letter to your legislators and the governor to get your voice heard on this very important issue. Thank you for your support and for helping us to help protect you.
And this is the website that the mayor was talking about, ProtectMyTown.com. As he mentioned, it takes three steps. The first one is looking at the form letter that they have, which is editable, can be edited by residents as it fits our own particular communities and whatever they would like to add to that. And then fill out the contact information on the right-hand side of the page. And step three is just hitting the take action button to submit to the governor's office. It can also be shared on, I'm not sure, it's not showing here, it's up at the top. It can be shared on Facebook and Twitter as well to encourage other friends to join the movement. As you know, and as I've talked about, since we were putting the budget together back in January, February, and March when I presented it to you, we have been asking the state to not consider taking the funds that we were promised back in 1969. Illinois municipalities lie, rely on the Local Government Distributive Fund, and that was instituted in 1969 as part of an agreement under which municipalities promised that they would not impose any local income taxes. And the state of Illinois would collect those taxes and then distribute back a proportionate share to the local governments. It guarantees municipalities a share of state income tax receipts, which are produced in their communities and help fund local services, which we talked about earlier. So again, this is a campaign that the councils of government and municipalities in those counties that I mentioned are asking residents to get involved and to contact the governor's office and to ask them not to take the funding, which in Geneva's case would be around $1 million. So we would need to forego $1 million worth of services out of a $16 million general fund to our citizens. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the deists? Thank you, Mary. We are on to new business. Is there new business from the deists? Alderman Simoni.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to bring the council up to speed, I guess, and basically give them a potential I just want to bring the council up to speed, I guess, and basically give them a potential heads-up of some situations that may come before us, just so we're prepared, or at least you're prepared to think about it. When they asked me to throw my name in the hat for this appointment, I did so, and not thinking I was going to get appointed, but I did. And, but I made a pledge to, I guess, myself, on behalf of the community, that while I'm in office, I want to try and do my best to impact the economic vitality of this town as best I can with regards to helping support the local businesses with increasing business through not only revenue of this town, but more importantly, revenue from outside of Geneva, because our future is dependent on that economic stability of our businesses in town. So, one of the initiatives that I've been working on for the last couple of years is to bring entertainment to town, which would answer a great deal of those economic possibilities. And some of you are aware of it, some of you are not, but more of a Arcata-like venue that allows us to play in that entertainment space and generate some tremendous revenues for our local businesses and which ultimately creates taxes, which ultimately benefits us all. As part of that, and a side note, I've been working this summer on a little taste of that opportunity through a summer festival, which we've coined at the present time, MigFest, Music in Geneva Festival. And we're working with the county and with the forest preserve and with the city of Geneva to try and pull this off. It's hard enough working with a single government. Three is a, whatever. So, but it's going to be a quick, it's going to be a quick race to possibly get this done. The county and forest preserve may be looking to us to get our endorsement or support on this before they approve it. Vice versa, we may need to require them to get their support before we approve it. There may be a few caveats with regards to our liquor license and the ability to serve spirits, extending some hours that, for the possibility, the number of days that we're talking, and possibly some in-kind services. I don't know all the details yet, and all I wanted to do is put it on the radar for the council. And as I find out more and I know more, I will come to you with the information and hopefully get your support in being able to make this happen. Because my vision is, we fast-forward this tape 10 years, and it's something that folks from around Chicago will come to because there'll be three or four of them. During summers, people will look forward to the MigFest like they look forward to Ravinia, not to that scale, and want to know who's playing, get on a train, come to Geneva, spend their money, spend their time, and enjoy music. And also, a benefit to local residents as well. And that's all I wanted to bring everybody up to speed on. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Simonian. Anything else from the dais? If not, I'd like to announce our next regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting is on Tuesday, May 26th at 7:00 PM, right here. Item six, we are going to be going into closed session on collective negotiating matters between public employees or representatives and their employees and pending litigation. There will be no action after this meeting, so you're free to adjourn. But a motion to adjourn to?
Second.
Sino and Singer. Is that a roll call? Roll call for that?
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Dean Kilberg?
Aye.
Chris Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Reddick?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Brown Singer?
Aye.
This meeting stands in temporary adjournment. Microphones are off.